At this time, we will call to order the Hamilton County Council meeting for Wednesday, January 5th. Madam Auditor, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Brad Beaver.
Here.
Fred Glenn.
Present.
Steve Schwartz.
Present.
Amy Mostelomani.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Madam President, you have a form.
Thank you so much. We'll now go on to the invocation and pledge of the legions led by Counselor Alexander.
Bow your heads. God at peace. We ask that you place your healing hand on our nation, strengthen those who protect our nation, and uphold our democracy so that our communities can be safe for us who gather here this evening. May we practice the patience, the cooperation, and the courage to lead wisely. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will move on to the selection of the 2022 council president. Is there a motion?
I'd like to nominate Steve Schwartz.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Counselor, President Schwartz, I will now pass the reins to you, sir.
Thank you. And at this time, I would entertain a motion for Vice President.
I will make a motion for Ken Alexander.
Second. Can we discuss this? I think this is...
Motion and second, yeah. Yeah.
That's it.
Now's the time.
That's the time, right?
Yeah.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify.
After the second, if you had discussion, that'd be the time.
I was just gonna just, you know, let out a bunch of stuff that I've collected, but I'm gonna keep that.
So you don't want to have a discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda, item five is public comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Saying none. Committee and officer reports. President, I have one item, and I would like to thank our past president, Amy. Thank you for getting us through these difficult times, and you did an awesome job, so thank you for your leadership.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. And that's all I have. Vice President?
Um, I have nothing.
Moving on to highway.
I don't, we did not meet this month.
No, we did not meet. And moving on to finance.
No meeting.
And a personnel poll.
We do have that information provided in the packet. It looks like we do have to do this work under personnel. Is that accurate? The LTC, is it just advertising what's the LTC worksheet and the?
Yeah, we're doing the approvals and everything there.
It is the LTC worksheet and the revised 2022 pay scale. Would you like to take both of those items at once, or would you like to take them one at a time?
I would make a motion to combine one and two.
Second.
What's the fact that the 22 pay scale and overall budget, did we get that information here?
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
And spreadsheet.
Bring up $43,000. And did we just, was this just a, you guys met, you turn around, you came up with a percentage to be a blanket thing, or did you sit there and cherry pick?
No, it had to do with just revision of the LTCs. And so when you put them back on the scale as to where they should have been on the revision of WIS, that's where the adjustment came into play, when you're looking at what the salaries, I guess, and the market, right? And the difficulties in hiring at that level, it was adjusting to what had been determined was market value.
So you had difficulties hiring at, but not all, every department's having difficulties hiring, right?
I think Sheena's coming forward. She could probably provide it. But I think if I'm not mistaken, every...
Everything, labor and trades has been difficult, and so when, so because of the scale...
You didn't just adjust labor and trades, right?
No, it's LTCs, yes. Labor and trade.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sheena. How can you?
Here to answer questions. I can't, couldn't hear you from the back. I'm sorry.
Well, I was just asking, I mean, does every, every, did you do some blanket here for these group, or did you cherry pick? And she was saying that you're having trouble hiring, but I mean, I haven't heard every one of those departments are having trouble hiring, so I was just kind of curious.
So we look at the classification as a whole, and it isn't just in Hamilton County. It seems to be a problem, you know, across the state of Indiana, in trying to find people in the labor trades and crafts industry. And so a lot of folks that we're competing with have raised the bar in order to keep their businesses afloat. And even trying to find, you know, people to come in and help plow snow. Mr. Watson's having trouble at our community crushings, finding people to run that facility. And the sheriff is struggling with finding folks to work in the jail as cooks. And the Buildings and Grounds Department is really struggling to find folks. And we, as I stated in the poll, have lots of different places that we're posting, and we're just not getting a whole lot of people making an application because I think our salary, our hourly rates were lower than our competition, so...
Yeah, and I totally see that. I mean, it's everywhere. The only thing that, that I just wonder if people are taking into account here is when all this federal money dries up, and because there's people that are, maybe not from over reading, what I've been reading, is that there's people that aren't working because they don't have to, right? So if this federal money dries up, I mean, this problem would go away. I mean, right? I mean, is that...
I don't believe...
I don't really think that's exactly true. I think that our labor trades and crafts entry level was $16 an hour currently, and it's just too low.
Well, if I could just say something, having, I, working in that industry, the labor and trades were already struggling before COVID got here with replacing people, and they were in a constant growth mode as far as salaries went. When, when this, when COVID came and you saw a lot of more veteran people in the industry leaving and not coming back, it exasperated what was already a problem. I don't think you're gonna get, when this is all, when COVID ends, that you're gonna get this returned back to a normal. We're still gonna have major issues with labor and trades, and I'm sure Counselor Beaver could probably share some.
This was also a report from the governor's office when they tried to stop the unemployment checks that were coming. That's what they said, too, that a lot of these shortages are coming because people are continuing to be able to get federal money on top of unemployment. So I'm just saying, what came from the governor's office, what was in IDJ, it was in everywhere else. So this isn't something that I just pulled off the top.
I know, and I'm not suggesting this.
I don't, I understand what you're saying, but I'll just give you a little example. I got, I got some family members that run dump trucks, and what happens is, is ABC dump truck down the road, they'll give you a $3,000 signing board as truck drivers go there, take the $3,000, you gotta stay six months. They've stayed there six months, they go to XYZ, who's giving you a $3,000. You know what I mean?
Yeah. They go one million. And I get what you're saying. All I'm saying is, when that ends, what, you know, what the governor tried to do, which I think they got stripped down in court, you know, we have that same problem when that, you know, when that money, federal money on top of the other money is no longer coming in, you know what I mean?
Well, we've been struggling with filling those types of positions long before COVID did. So I think that it's just, hopefully this will allow us to find staff and get those positions filled so that we can get through the winter.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to combine one and two on the personnel poll. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is...
It must approve.
I'm sorry, motion to approve. There's been a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now miscellaneous on our committee and officer reports. Saying none, we'll move on to item seven, unfinished business. Don't see any in note table business. Moving on to number nine, new business, approval of vendor claims.
To move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on those?
No.
Saying none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, item B is a resolution CC01052022-01. It's a resolution concerning the purchase of real estate for the JS McCarty Drainage Project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Saying none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item C, a resolution CC01052022-02. It's a temporary interfund loan.
To move.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion here? Saying none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item D, it's a resolution CC01052022-03. It's a resolution concerning the purchase of real estate for the 146 and Allisonville Road Intersection Project.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Saying none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item E, it's the 2022 board appointments. I think you all have that paperwork in front of you.
I have one that's not listed on here. I know we have listed as the assessor, but just a liaison change. Sue Mackey had agreed, if, if the council so approves, to replace me as the liaison member for Hamilton County Economic Development. Is there any position? It, it's under all of our board appointments. It's within encompassing and the packet. But if we wanted to look individually at the one that was listed, it just a change that...
Are we gonna go through these one at a time?
If you feel we need to, otherwise I would accept a motion.
The only, only, for what was handed out, this document here?
Yes.
I know that was listed in here that the soil and water conservation Chris Woodard decline appointment. Go ahead and, and I would like to change that to include me. I think, I mentioned that a few months ago, that I would take over that until we can find someone. So if we want to just place me in there and amend this report, that's okay?
And what I'm also noticing is that, and Sue, we talked about this at maybe our work session, that the entire packet, or that all of them weren't listed, and it's still not in here. So I don't know if we're missing...
What's not listed?
What, like the liaison, unless I'm just not seeing it. Um... The Hamilton County Economic Development liaison member wasn't listed on here, which I know we voted on it in 2021.
Jim Inova?
No.
No, this is our, I mean, as far as...
Were you talking about the last page thing that says the liaison members?
I'm there. The one that I'm referencing that Sue and I were...
There was one document.
No, no, that's the document. Right, yes, yes. I know, there's a different...
There's several documents that keep crossing each other, and some have some on, and some don't.
So I was just making reference that the Hamilton County Economic Development liaison member was what I was assigned to in 2021, is not listed on the sheet provided in the packet.
Well, mine is.
Yeah, it's in the second page.
Right here on the second page.
It's on the second page.
That's why I wasn't seeing it. I was looking at it, I apologize. I was looking to it as a liaison.
You're included.
Yes, that's the one I'm referencing, if, based on the yearly appointment, if Sue Mackey...
You want to go off of question wrong?
That is correct, because it's a yearly appointment.
Cool by me.
Thank you for clarifying on that. I was looking in the wrong spot.
So other than Amy on the, and, uh, Ken replacing our guy at Soil and Water, do we can, with those two exceptions, we can approve this list?
There's one clarification, this was kind of blurry last year, too, was the tourism board, Hamilton County Tourism. There's that tourism board, and I know I saw bring it in here, yes, it was the tourism board, and there's the commission. Now, does the one liaison serve as liaison for both those entities? Because I remember back in the day, there were two council members that, it was Meredith Carter and Coach Feldman.
I think if he's asked for one person to serve, I love that.
So they can't be...
It's been one person for both. About eighty percent of their content is the same at both meetings.
Okay, so that makes sense.
That's why I said, well, it makes sense to give Ken one standing.
Okay, so the, again, and the clarification, too. So if you notice on the document itself, these terms have all expired. On the, like, so alcohol and beverage, and we've had people that have expressed interest in those, which, you know, I'm not incorrect. We are in '22, right? So we'd have to go through and determine if these appointees that have expired as of '21 are still the same. Does that make sense?
I thought, I thought that that's when their term expired, but they served until we made a different decision.
Well, right, so if we're gonna adopt this, though, as such, so then we're not adopting through '22, that's what, does that make sense?
No, I don't understand what you're saying.
We need to know whether they, these people have terms that have expired last, at the end of last year, if they still want to continue, even though legally they're still on because they haven't been replaced, but do they want to?
Right, which we know, like, Mike Colby has expressed interest. I mean, we've gotten...
Well, yeah, I can say that I got people from the Plan Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals that wanted to stay.
Well, I, I can, can, I think Amy, to maybe speed that conversation up, the ones that weren't concerned are the 1231 of 2021 expiration dates. I can go through those and make a, make a, um, and make a, uh, you know, a recommendation that, that we move forward with those and then bring that to a vote, is that kind of what, and do them individually, name them out? Is that, is that, that solve your problem?
I just want to make sure that all of the information that has been sent to the auditor, when we have, there are appointments that expire, there are normally letters sent, and we've seen them sporadically, right, over the course of the last few months. I just want to ensure that we aren't missing anybody that hasn't been requesting, if they're all the same, they're all going to be in the same position for '22. I just, that's, that's all I was asking, so I don't want to...
I think at this point, we'll just assume if their name's on here, and if we've made a mistake, we'll go back and fix it later.
Okay.
Somebody's disappointed. You know about it, or they don't, you know. You got something in particular, Ken?
Me?
Somebody in particular that...
I don't. No, I mean, I, I, I had no one reach out to me directly this time. So I know that, and I know that Randy Zentz, who was already on the Board Redevelopment Commission Board with you, he's already expressed interest in staying on board. I'm supportive of that, but other than that, I haven't had anyone reach out to me this time around.
No, and I haven't either. I think the thing is, is that, did we have everybody that expressed interest that provided it? And I don't know if, Madam Auditor, you, you have this information, but were there people that are listed on here that did not express interest?
I, I've only got four letters.
Okay, so we could safely say at this time, we only have two amendments to the paperwork in front of us. So we could entertain a motion at this time, is that correct?
I'll make a motion, that's, uh, and I'm just gonna go through it, and just with the two changes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the Hamilton County Council board appointments for the terms expiring on 1231 of '21, as provided in the packet, with the exception of Sue Mackey on the Hamilton County Economic Development Corporation, and Ken Alexander on the Soil and Water Conservation District be approved.
Yes.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Now we have, now we're doing, we can do the liaison.
I think they were all, we just now approved them all.
Okay. Well, okay.
Okay, page two of your agenda, item F, it is the grant appropriations and transfers. The first item under F is Fund 105, I'm sorry, 1045, NDOT. It's an airport operations monitoring equipment appropriation of $4,050.
Steve, let me butt in here a minute.
Yes, sir.
Did we, did we...
Do you get the motion to, like, do that, right?
Yeah.
I'll motion approval of...
I'll second.
Okay.
Did we effectively handle Pita Bola?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, because this is a separate letter here. Are those same names, do those names match? That's in the letter? Same, yeah, same, for the same ones.
Okay, I just want to make sure we got the...
Okay.
Good enough, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, let me go back, and it's Fund 1045, NDOT. It's the airport operations monitoring equipment appropriation for $4,050.
Did we got a motion?
We do.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, we do have motion, and did we get a second?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Ah, it's a little tool that they use to, uh, check the traction of the runway. When it snows or has ice, they go out and check to see what the traction is.
Okay.
When the jet lands, he puts on the brakes. Can't keep stopping time, cannot pull off the end of the runway.
Those are important, is it not, I'd say so?
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you for that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item two, it's Fund 8221, FWHA reimbursement. Appropriation $32,131.16.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Saying none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And number three is Fund 8908. It's a FEMA public assistance appropriation for $33,376.52.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Saying none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10 on your agenda, it's additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. And at this time, I believe we need to open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. And item A, under 10, is Fund 1,000, General Fund. It's Buildings and Grounds 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Saying none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item two, it's the sheriff. It's a 144 amendment.
I'll make a motion to combine A through C under the sheriff.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries now.
And I'll make a motion to approve the A through C.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sheriff, do you, do you have enough money in your budget to handle this?
Yeah, these are all within the budget.
Okay.
Moving on to item B, it's Fund 1219. It's the... Moving on to item D, it's Fund 1219. It's the Park and Recreation. It's a 144 amendment. And amended job descriptions.
Let's, if you want to combine one and two.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion for the approval of one and two under B.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to C on your agenda, it's Fund 1222. It's a 144 amendment.
For who?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Brad, you had discussion?
Is it for 911? Who's it for?
Yes.
911, okay.
It's for an administrative coordinator, if I'm not mistaken. It's not right.
That's right.
It's a transfer from our office to their office.
Okay, and that's paid for with 911 funds. Okay.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to D on your agenda, it's Fund 4603. It's a lease, excuse me, a lease rental. And it's a transfer of $3,145,413.
So moved.
Second.
Is there some discussion? Saying none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item E on your agenda, it's Fund 4907. It's the Highway COAT requesting $10,000 in additional appropriation.
Actually, that was pulled.
It was pulled.
Just go to items one and two.
Okay, so it's.
E altogether is out, done?
No, just the, the additional because we didn't have the budget all of it, so we couldn't act on that.
But you still, they still want the 144 transfer.
Yeah, that's related to that.
Oh, it's a motion, we put those two together.
I agree. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the additional. You think you saved any time right there? Yeah?
Not the additional. He's, he's making the motion for one and two. Approval.
Is it motion for E one and two combined?
We already combined. Now it's approved.
Oh, approval, yeah. Um, I'll, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F on your agenda, it's Fund 9162-2022. It's Community Corrections 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, item 11 on your agenda, it's announcements, Sheriff. Oh, I'm sorry. I, before we do that, I need to close the public hearing. Now moving on to announcements, Sheriff.
Yeah, KPMG reached out to us. We have our first initial meeting with them on Friday.
They come in person?
No, it is a team's meeting.
What time, what time's that meeting? You like a Zoom meeting?
Yeah, they haven't confirmed the time. It's gonna be somewhere around lunchtime. There were a couple, a couple of different times that they're supposed to get back with this.
I did ask Dan, and I can't remember if I copied you or Ken, but when they did come into town, if, when they do come into town, if they are here overnight and potentially over meeting time, because it may have been, um, it was supposed to have been, yeah.
They couldn't do a site visit this time, yeah.
Yeah, so in general, if they can come by and say hi, I would have them do that.
Yeah, Fred, we're, it's gonna be back now, so.
Again, what was the date on that team's meeting?
It's the 7th, it's Friday, and it's either gonna be 11:00, 12:00, or 1 o'clock. They're, they're supposed to get back with me, yeah.
And do we need to get?
Just not officially the time.
An invite to join that meeting?
If it's a team's meeting, you'd need to get a team's invite, yes.
Does anybody request an invite?
I can request one. I, I got a call, we got a call with them Friday, I believe, so it's gonna be, it sounds, that's why I asked you what time it was. Sounds like it's gonna be right after that, the thing that you have.
Fred, Fred, you're, you're leading the charge on that. Would you say that?
Do you want to be in on that one?
I think we've been getting the same correspondence. The three of us have been getting the correspondence from Dan, so.
So do you want to request a team invite?
I'm, I'm comfortable with, with Fred being there to represent, but if he's not, I'll be happy to stay and step in.
Well, I, I gotta reply to them tomorrow, because we're going back and forth on the time for Friday. Like I said, I think it's gonna be bright. We're gonna have a meeting, an update on everything right after the meeting with the sheriff.
I'm happy to help, if you can attend or I can. Just let me know, Fred.
Okay.
Likewise. All right. Okay, Council Attorney.
For the group?
Madam Auditor.
I have nothing.
Thank you.
Oh, um.
Any comments to the good of the order?
I have one question, Counselor Nation. Do you know when you'll be able to provide us with an updated version of the rules that we can review?
The, the only amendments that I have is yours.
So they're the same, pretty much the same as what we discussed.
That's right, in our last meeting. So what I can do, I can meet with Chris and see if we can do it where.
Like redraft?
Show the old and then strip it through and then the new.
Okay.
And we can, I can go ahead and probably distribute that next week and then go ahead and see what will be our next.
Okay.
Did you, did you receive my notes?
Yes, your notes, too. But Amy went through and redrafted some of the sections directly, and that was the ones that I think there was a consensus last time that those are all acceptable amendments, so there was, I, I, but I haven't put it together yet.
Yeah, have the, have the legal gentleman, I don't know that my verbiage would be legal.
Your verbiage was fine, but just to put it together in the document.
Sure, no, thank you.
I think.
Oh, well, thank you so much. It's Mary's attorney at one point.
I think one of the concerns is that everybody has a chance to look over this before we bring it to the next council meeting. So when everybody agrees, if you want to.
Let's do this. I'll work with Chris, get that draft out to everyone, and then if I don't hear anything back, I will request maybe a work session at the beginning of the next council meeting.
Fine with that.
I think that's great.
Very good.
Thank you so much, you and Chris.
Perfect. Anything else? Saying none, we'll adjourn.